I've never seen that before.
Very good at that.
Did you break your chair?
Huh?
We're officially reconvened?
Yes, so.
Well, let's see how quick. My recollection, we left off on page 17 on paragraph R23, employee references. I don't know that that was ever spelled out, but that is the best practice is that we don't have individual department heads or employees providing references, rather, they all go through the Human Resources Director and simply outline the employee's name, job title, dates they were employed, and a brief outline of their role in the county. As a practical matter, employees have access to their personnel files and they can get performance reviews and things of that nature. The reason we do that is there has been an increase in recent years in the number of cases that have been filed for negligent referrals. If we say, you know, Grant's a wonderful attorney, did a good job, and trade him off to Calumet County and they learned that I am a schmuck, they can come back to Winnebago or Door County and say, hey, you told us he was a good attorney.
I'm going to bang up. We stretched it.
I think Maureen said she's been there. Employer-owned property, again, a common sense provision that it's to be used for county business purposes only and that this is Jill's provision in terms of employers are to take due care with regard to the use of the employer's property and not terrorously damage or destroy it and promptly report any damage to or loss of employer's property to a supervisor. Ethics, it's a restatement of what we already have in place. It references the ordinance that we enacted on April 20th, 2010. And maybe to take a step back a little bit, a lot of the resolutions and ordinances that are referenced in this document have been spread out all over the place. This is the first time we've had these things in one package, which is convenient. And I'm almost sure we missed some things and that's why this is going to be a living, breathing document we're going to change from time to time. Fitness and ability determination, the county does have the ability as an employer to use fair, reasonable, and non-discriminatory means to determine fitness and ability. And this is a corollary of the county's ability or prerogative to establish qualifications for the work or positions. We do this to a limited extent in some departments because, and will continue to do it and expand that, because some of the departments require physical lifting, physical agility, things like that, again, under the collective bargaining agreement. It was difficult to do this. Now that we are unfettered from the collective bargaining agreements, we can set reasonable conditions. Gifting gratuities, this is a restatement of what has been in effect since 2008 with respect to the door prizes or raffles. And what has long been the case is that we are not to use our public positions to solicit or accept anything of value. And that has always been the case. Health and safety, this is an important provision and one that has been in place for a while. In essence, we need to provide and maintain a self-unhealthy work environment for our employers, our employees. And as is stated in the nine paragraphs, the county needs the employees' cooperation to make sure that happens. And we take this very seriously because obviously if there are some safety and health issues, we might incur liability with workers' compensation or liability elsewhere if our employees do something that is unsafe and injure somebody else. Insubordination, that's one of the classic no-no's in the employer-employee relationship. And it was difficult to express this adequately. We have not defined it anywhere. But essentially what I am trying to say, we're trying to get across is even if your boss tells you to do something and you think it's the dumbest thing on earth, it's not unsafe and it's not illegal or immoral, just do it and the old do first and complain about it later. You don't want to sit there and get into an argument with your supervisor because our expectation as an employer is that employers are going to listen to their supervisors within reason and, for lack of a better word, argue about it later. Indemnification, this is a restatement of the statute that the county is obligated to defend and indemnify and hold harmless the employees from any acts that occur while the employee is engaged in the course of their employment. This has been the subject of a fair amount of litigation. One of the silliest cases that has come down the pike probably about eight, nine, 10 years ago was a salesperson who was on the road, decided to go to their cabin in northern Wisconsin in December rather than check into a hotel, was rather intoxicated, was not able to get the stove lit, fell asleep and woke up and had frostified to the extent that they lost digits in the pen on their fingers and their hands. The employer reasonably said, you know, you were off your sales call, yes, you were traveling, you drank in excess, you went to your cabin rather to a hotel which we would have paid for, and were too intoxicated to turn on the heat. That's what caused your injury. The court said, nope, that is within the course of employment because, but for the fact that the salesman was on the road, they would not have been there. So courts have broadly interpreted it and thankfully we haven't come up against anything like that here, but the general rule is with employees, if something happens during the course of their employment, we're obligated to defend and indemnify. Interns and student trainees, this has been an issue that has come up in the last couple of years, not so much in the public sector, but it's important we take note of it. In the private sector, employers have traditionally used interns and student employees as indentured servants and not paid them. And to some extent, that's okay as long as they're benefiting from it in some way. For instance, we recently had a paralegal intern from NWTC. She was not paid, but she received credit. I won't call her an indentured servant, but she worked as would any other staff person in her office. We expected that she would perform the duties and tasks that were assigned to her with the general amount of guidance one might expect in a law office, which is the whole point of the program. And that's perfectly okay. But otherwise, if you've got a legal or a law student intern and you put him or her in the side office next to the library and made him or her work 80 or 90 hours a week doing research and filing briefs and you didn't pay them, you're treating that person more like an associate than an intern, and that's not going to pass muster. So that's kind of the distinction. Thankfully, the Department of Labor has issued guidelines that are fairly clear and concise and have actually been incorporated into this. Jury witness duty, again, a continuation of what we are currently doing under the Door County policies and procedure, that being that we reimburse people, not reimburse, we allow people to attend to their civic duties and don't dock them a day of pay. What we do request is that they turn in any witness fee or jury fee they get from the courts in exchange for their day of pay. If we didn't do this and employers generally didn't do this, people would be more likely to try to get out of jury duty since we're a county, we have courts, and we're in the business of trying to encourage people to meet their civic responsibilities. It seems like a responsible practice to continue, although it's not something we have to do. The next one is the nap room. That was put in there for an obvious purpose. One, I was getting bored and entertained myself. And two, to make sure everybody read this, we can leave that in there, but we don't have to.
But the room's been remodeled already.
That's what all the trucks are. And actually, there are employee handbooks where they do allow employees to take a nap, believe it or not.
How do they schedule that?
Yeah, we'd like to know.
I am not suggesting we do it, I'm just saying it happens.
What's the bamboo mat for?
You have to ask Ted, it was his idea.
Okay.
With automatic pilot, right?
Nepotism, which is also in our policies and procedures and is in your little Door County handbook, this relates really to employees working within the same departments. And we've had issues with that during my tenure here. We had spouses working in a department, one of the spouses was elevated to department head status and it didn't work out so well, so the spouse, one of them had to decide which one went. And so it just makes sense when you're within a department that you don't have relatives. And I've defined related employees here to mean children's, parents, grandparents, and siblings, and spouses, parents-in-law, and siblings-in-law, because those are the people you're probably closest with. The issue that arises is if I'm supervising my son in a department of 15 people and no matter what you do, you're going to be, come out on the losing end. If you treat your son more strictly than everybody else, they're going to think you're being unfair. And if your son gets treated equally or better than anybody else, there's going to be a perception of being unfair. So the best practice for employers is just that we don't want you to do it. It hasn't come up too often, but when it does, people are just going to have to make choices as to what they want to do in terms of trying for promotion or not. I don't know in the county right now whether we have too many related employees working in the same department. Off the top of my head, I don't think we have any. It's not a present problem. Off-duty conduct, this is unique to the public sector, not unique, but more important to the public sector because we all know public employees are held to a higher standard than private employees. We represent whatever public entity we work for. We are supposed to both at work and outside of work maintain a certain standard. And when we stray from that standard, there are going to be consequences. So, and again, it's a common sense. When you're in the private sector, it's one thing, you can do things that are under the radar. When you're in the public sector, particularly when you're in a position of a department head or a supervisory position, you simply have to watch and mind your Ps and Qs when you're away from work. Payroll procedures, this just memorializes what we are currently doing. The timekeeping requirements and permissible payroll deductions will be set forth in the manual. Pay schedule remains as it is currently. We will continue with the mandatory direct deposit. My recollection is that there are only a few employees in the highway department that are grandfathered that have not signed on. After January 1, 2014, they will not have a choice anymore. And the reason for direct deposit is quite simply just paperwork. It is simpler to directly deposit the money into somebody's account. And that's the way everybody is doing banking these days. Payroll procedures continued in terms of the employee's obligation to promptly review their paystubs, payer electronic, and immediately report errors to employers. What we can't or don't want to encourage are errors that sit dormant for a long period of time. If an employee reviews their pay stub, notices an error, they should report it quickly. What we really want to avoid is if there's an error made in November or December and the employee discovers it but doesn't bother to report it in February, surely he's got to go back and unwind the W-2 statements and all the federal reporting. And we all should be reviewing our pay stubs. And if you get paid $1 or $2 more or less, you're not going to notice it. But if you have an extra $2,000 in your paycheck, that's not money that fell out of trees. Somebody made a mistake somewhere. Personnel records is a simply restatement of the statute. Wisconsin law allows employees in the public sector to inspect and obtain a copy of their personnel records. And if an employee disagrees with anything in the personnel records, they are allowed to put a written statement in there indicating why they disagree and a brief outline arguing their case.
Counselor?
Yes?
Are personnel records kept in all in one spot or are they in their respective department for the employee?
Ideally, the best practice is they should be kept all in one spot in the Human Resources Department. As a matter of practice, I'm not sure that that is the case. I believe the Sheriff's Department may have. Nope, that has changed.
Not anymore.
All right.
Brought them all over.
So you have all of them, Kelly?
I do.
Thank you.
All the jackets.
When and how does a, any kind of an item wind up in the personnel?
Well, that's why you want the personnel records in one department, the Human Resources Director is the gatekeeper of what goes into personnel records. There are things that go into the personnel records and there are items that shouldn't go into personnel records. And the HR Director is the logical person to screen that. And if nothing else, it causes consistency. And I don't want to leave you with the impression that an employee has the ability to have whatever they want put in their personnel records. What they have a right to do is if there's something in their personnel record that they disagree with is they could file a written rebuttal.
Well, almost on a monthly basis, the Sheriff's Department gets letter, accommodations on officers and they say it's going to their personnel file.
They send those over and they are filed? Yes.
It's very common with the Sheriff's Department.
And Parks Department as well.
Kelly, do you keep the medical separate?
Yes, they have their own jacket.
Political activity, simply put, county employees ought not be engaging in. Political activity, the Hatch Act has certain prohibitions as to employees taking active partisan politic campaigns or management, and I have if and as applicable there. That is because the Hatch Act is a string that is attached to some of the dollars received from the federal and state government. So the best practice is simply for us to have a prohibition on political activity on county time or with county resources. And that is the approach we have taken. I think this is probably consistent with what's in the current procedure, policy and procedures book, it's just in one place and concisely stated. And our employees all know that, so. Reimbursement, this has to do with meals, mileage, and overnight lodging or lost or damaged personal property. Our employees who go into the field, sanitarians, zoning administrators, conservationists, it's not unusual for them to damage a piece of their personal property. And if they do that in the course of their employment, then they are entitled to have it replaced or repaired. It happens not all that frequently, but frequently enough where we ought to have it in the policy. Secondary employment, there's not a strict prohibition on it, but we want to know where our employees are working and that's why we require written prior approval. That's a continuation of the existing policy that's in place for the non-represented employees. It's any job you have that is not with the county.
I cut my neighbor's lawn?
Nope. Unless you have a lawn, if you have a lawn care business, yes. If you are, if you're self-employed and you're reporting taxes based on that self-employment, then you're, you've got secondary employment.
Basically, you're saying the county has to be your primary job.
Right. And the county needs to know what you're doing. And there may be jobs that are inconsistent. One of the things, for instance, with the sheriff's deputies, and this is a case that came around, came about years ago, is there was a sheriff's deputy that wanted to be a bartender in a gentleman's club. And the sheriff in that county decided that that was inconsistent with the image of a law enforcement officer and they were not going to allow that person to have that outside employment. That was litigated and it was deemed to be reasonable. That's the extreme example. And there are other ones you might want to think of. For instance, in my case, you wouldn't want me working for a firm within Door County that was engaged in land development because I would be working both sides of the fence. So, but common sense, if you're cutting your neighbor's grass, chances are you're getting cash through the fence and you're not reporting that as income. You have Ninus Lawn Care LLC and you're driving around in a truck and you have employees and you're filing self-employment taxes, then that's secondary employment.
You're just saying the county needs to know about it. Can't not do it, though.
They can't, well, they can not do it if there's an incompatibility or conflict, yeah.
Who signs off on it? You said the employer.
Department head.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we do now. There's a form and the department head's supposed to. For instance, we've had assistant corporation councils that worked in accounting firms during tax time preparing tax documents I didn't see as conflict and signed off on it. So, yes.
See, secondary employment also earlier about time and a half, you know, people that are employed by the county that are also like on their voluntary departments now are paid on call or EMTs. I see where that's going to be a little situation, but I'm sure that's going to be covered in the administrative part of their job or?
Right. We've looked at that with the, for instance, the first responders. And there is enough separation between, say, a paramedic and our emergency medical services department who is a first responder with one of the first responder units because they're acting under the auspices of that first responder unit. It's different than if they were volunteering their time for the county just as a volunteer. So it's a subtle distinction, but it's an important one. And that was the dual employment where employees volunteering to do the same thing for the county that they do in their work. The non-exempt employees simply can't do that without us getting into trouble under the Fair Labor Standard Act. The reason for that, it wasn't unusual for private employers to say, you're punching out at 3:00 and you're going to volunteer your time until 6:00 to get the work done.
And then there's another case where someone might be like in soil and water and all of a sudden they're EMTs and they get on call for four hours on a shift. So that's a little different than first responder because then the county's going to be paying them. So is that going to be separated for their overtime purposes? Because it's a different, coming from a different pot of money.
That would be a unique situation because, Kelly can correct me, I'll just, for the sake of argument, the conservationists are exempt.
Yes.
And then the other ones would be not exempt. So you'd have that dual employment situation where we would just have to monitor to make sure that when they're acting in their non-exempt role with the county that they weren't accruing overtime.
Right. You've got to make sure that's pointed out somewhere.
Yeah. And that's under the dual employment section. And a lot of this is, maybe to get to Joel's concern, is we just want to know so we can address it so it doesn't become an issue. Because we're typically, when you don't know what's going on and all of a sudden you have that eureka moment, oh, my gosh, and then you have to go back and maybe redo somebody's payroll and pay them overtime and things of that nature.
Think of the situation where someone is, is doing exactly their first responder and they get injured on the job. Are they responding as a first responder for a local community or are they doing this as county? So we kind of have to know what they're doing. That's why it's important that we sign off. Another important point that you raised is where there are collective bargaining agreements, Grant, we should speak to this, there will be collective bargaining agreements in place for deputies and for paramedics. Those collective bargaining agreements are the first and foremost document. Where they're silent, that's where the employee handbook would take over. So the subtlety there, if they, if they're, if we had bargained the right for an employee to respond as a first responder, that would control. If the contract is silent on it, then this would control.
I guess, can I ask a question, too? Similar to what Dale was saying, say you have an employee that works on an eight-hour shift in whatever department and that's their eight hours. Now they get off duty and they have a, they're a member of a local Southern Door Fire EMS service. They go to a four-hour training session in the capacity of an EMT, which is technically a county position. Do they now just work a 12-hour day in the eyes of the county and get paid four hours of overtime for the EMT training?
It's possible. You would have to look at what their primary job, if the primary job was non-exempt and they were going to training at the behest of the county as an EMT, then it's potential that they would have overtime, yes. And that's, again, why we would have to analyze.
Exactly.
And schedule the training on a day when they wouldn't otherwise be working or schedule training on a day when they took accrued paid leave.
Or it's bargained at the time because these folks will continue to be.
Yeah, these folks will continue to be represented.
Understanding upfront that says, you know, it's not overtime because it's not the same job that your main focus or job is, or, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. There's a dual employment test that the Fair Labor Standard Act has. And again, we're still going to be under the, as Maureen said, with the sheriff's deputies and the EMS employees with the contractual overtime where the FLSA is kind of out the window and they accrue overtime at a more generous rate than the law requires. Yes. Anything else?
And it's not uncommon to bargain those kinds of items, right, Grant?
No. And there's some incompatibilities. For instance, we had road deputies requesting they could be fire chiefs and the Attorney General had decided that is an incompatibility because a fire chief at the scene of fire and a deputy sheriff seen a fire have very distinct and sometimes contradictory responsibilities. Separation from employment, we just spell out the ideal. Obviously, if somebody marches out the door, we really can't compel them to do anything. But what we've seen with the vast majority of our employees is that they honor the protocols we have in place. And this simply spells out a rational way when somebody leaves here, whether, for whatever reason, that they give the written notice and what the Human Resources Department will do when they receive written notification of resignation. And it sets the expectations of both the employees and what's expected of the county when somebody walks out, when somebody ceases being in employment with Door County anymore. Smoking, other tobacco use, that has long been prohibited. It started with strings attached to federal grants with the grandstand and have continued with the state's passage of statutes, which basically do not allow employers to have, allow smoking within their facilities. Somebody, I think Ben asked me the question, he left, how do we enforce this? Because if you go past the building, you'll see employees smoking outside in the parking lot. Occasionally, you might see employees smoking in county vehicles.
On the lawnmowers.
On the lawnmowers. If, if the supervisor, department head catches them, they tell them not to do it. But it's one of those things, unless you have smoking police, people that smoke are going to find ways to smoke. Thankfully, I think as Rayanne alluded to, the number of smokers we have are relatively small and few and far between. The only time it really gets to be a problem is when they're hiding in the alcove in January and whoever walks in and out of the building, you've got to basically walk in and out through what could be a bar or what used to pass for a bar.
Question. Is that title missing a word?
What?
Smoking, other tobacco use.
And other tobacco.
It could be and.
I figured the word "and" might belong there, but.
And it might be one of the.
At 9:00 at night, you know, I'm thinking, what are we really talking about?
It's the other side of tobacco.
Exactly.
And I still have grammatical corrections to make. I have literally white sheets with red marks on it from some of our more studious department heads.
Would that be a supplement, then, to, to this booklet? If the highway department should come up and say, there's no smoking in any of our county trucks?
That's part of this.
So this would cover it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, our current policy does not allow smoking anywhere within the county. Vehicles.
I think an exception, an exception might be the grandstand at the fairgrounds?
No.
Did we stop that, too?
Yeah, we, actually, we stopped that fairly early because some of the grant money that we use to fund the fairgrounds, it wasn't a lot, required that they're not, smoking not be allowed at the, at the grandstand. If you remember, one of our neighbors who has since retired and complained longly and loudly about that because that crowd seemed perhaps more than others were a smoking crowd, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So, yeah, it covers every space, even parks.
But not the beer stands on the midway?
Technically, yes.
No, I think it'd be pretty hard to enforce it.
It's, you have to pick and choose where you're going to enforce things. It's analogous to, we actually have some taverns in Door County yet that choose to get citations once a week and allow smoking. The patrons come in and throw a couple bucks on the bar before they light up. Sheriff deputy dutifully, sheriff deputy dutifully issue citations, they pay them, and the law kind of works the way it's supposed to work. There's only one or two of them, but.
He promised to stop.
Well, that and what, a dollar will get you a cup of coffee.
Does this apply to organizations that we support substantially?
No. We, we, we could put some restrictions, we have not done so. Solicitation and distribution, again, it's just a matter of control. If you let the Girl Scouts in here, you've got to let the NRA, you have to let. If you let the Girl Scouts in here, you've got to let the NRA, you have to let everybody in. So what we've tried to do is simply have a prohibition on solicitation and distribution of literature for any purpose on county property. Does it -- is there an absolute prohibition? No. We have provided an exception that's not stated anywhere for certain charities, and so it's another thing that the policy is in place, it has been in place, but it's difficult to have an absolute prohibition on anything, but we try to control it, and it hasn't been a problem yet. United Way is the one that most people let in the door. Subcontracting, this is important, I think, from the collective bargaining agreement and the representative employee standpoint. Up until now, we have not been allowed to subcontract out what would otherwise be bargaining unit work after January 1, 2014. If it makes sense for the county to do so, from a fiscal standpoint, we're able to do so. It doesn't mean we have to, it just means that we can. And that's been in here, too. We will look at this on a department-by-department basis, and further detail will be in the administrative manual. But it may make sense in certain circumstances, particularly in light of the restrictions at the Affordable Care Act and the limitations in hours that the Wisconsin retirement system has now, the trigger for qualifications for the WRS. Technology use, this is a general guideline. The administrative manual will be more specific, but it, again, is a recognition that absolute prohibitions don't work. County technology is provided primarily for county business use, but as a practical matter, you're not going to ding somebody if their spouse sends them an email on the county email saying, "Pick up eggs and milk on the way home from work." It's no different than the phone call. It's just a different sort of technology. What we're trying to protect against here are the people who would take that to the extreme, the person that might sit on their county computer and play fantasy baseball, football, basketball, seven and a half hours a day, and aside from logging on and logging off, they don't do any work. I use that example, because we locked somebody out the door for doing that many, many years ago. In the child support office, this is probably 15 years ago, under our former child support agency director's tutelage, nobody could quite figure out what the person was doing, and when they went on and looked, they found that this person was playing fantasy sports all day. So. And what you have to remember is a lot of these rules are designed to protect against the bad actor, who are usually, you know, one-half of 1% of your population, but you have to have the rules in there. Teleworking is a completely new concept in Door County. We included it in there just to allow for its possibility. Whether or not this is going to go anywhere is ultimately going to decide, be decided on a department-to-department basis and worked out in the administrative manual. But the theme here is it has to be of mutual benefit. There has to be benefit to the county, and there has to be benefit to the employee. One of the examples that we have kind of fancied about is whether you're a zoning administrator, a conservationist, or a caseworker, or a social worker, if you live in Southern Door County and you have six home visits in Southern Door County, it doesn't make sense for you to drive to Sturgeon Bay, clock in, do your six visits, drive to Sturgeon Bay, clock out, and go home. But we're not, you know, we're not going to be in a situation, or we shouldn't be in a situation, where we're allowing people to work from home just for the sake of working from home, but there are uses for it. It has been done, both in the private and the public sector, and as long as we're careful in its use and diligent in monitoring, there's no reason why we can't do it here. Volunteers and volunteering, that gets to what we've talked about, is basically the rule is, if you are not exempt from the Fair Labor Standard Act, a public sector employee cannot volunteer for the employer to do the same thing they do in their job. And if they do, you run the risk of having to pay them, and even having to pay them Weapons is a restatement or a reference to the resolution we passed back in September of 2011, and that was in reaction to the state rules regarding weapons primarily firearms, but it expands beyond that. The resolution is in the packet, and in essence, we have made the decision that we are not going to allow the unauthorized possession of a weapon on the employer's premise while the employee is on duty. So. What that doesn't extend to, which is very clear in the statute, is an employee may have a firearm in their car, appropriately stored in the parking lot. We can't control anything outside the four walls of the building. Workplace flexibility is sort of a generalized statement and encompasses the teleworking concept, and it's sort of a new broad term out there that isn't really susceptible to firm definition, but I've tried to outline broadly that it includes teleworking, flexible work arrangements, job sharing, compressed or reduced schedules, and other things. And again, this allows for this to happen if it's to the employer's benefit and to the employee's benefit, and we will work that out in the administrative manual. For instance, aside from the example I gave previously, with our highway department, we have made the decision long ago that it makes sense to go to a four-day work week in the summer. It might make sense to work for 10-hour days for other groups of employees, for instance, the social workers or the zoning administrators, and have one group work Monday through Thursday, and another group work Tuesday through Saturday, so that somebody's here on Saturday when our, you know, these are all things that we can consider. But what this does is give the county flexibility to take a look at this and incorporate this concept in the administrative manual, if it makes sense. Workplace privacy, there isn't any. And that, I mean, that's as simple as I can put it. Anything that any of us do here, on the county phones, on the county computers, in our offices, open to the world to see, and I think at this point, we all understand it, and we've all seen the examples in the press with the ill-advised tweet, the ill-advised email, hitting send all rather than replying to somebody. So you just have to be careful, and sooner or later, we will have that oops moment, we just haven't had it yet.
I just had somebody looking for mason jars.
Yeah.
You got any?
Unapologetically looking for mason jars. Work schedules, it's the same thing, is we kind of set the general tone that the work week and the hours of work and shifts are going to be set forth in the administrative manual. But what I would imagine is that we are going to move away from the standard 8:00 to 4:30, again, for the same reasons. You might want to have some departments start at 7:00, you might want to have some departments have evening hours to make it more convenient, you might want to have some departments have Saturday morning hours. And basically, the world is the county's hoister, so we get to design the workplace and how we deliver services to our constituents with very few restrictions in the way we want to right now. And I can't stress enough that we have a unique opportunity here to redefine the way the county does business, and we simply have to take advantage of it. I'm not going to go through the attachments, because you've seen those before. I don't know if there's any questions, aside from the nap room.
That's right.
Yes?
I'd just like to make a motion that we adopt the employee handbook as presented. I found it to be comprehensive but generic enough to allow management to have final say, no matter how it's worded.
You're not going to make that?
Am I correct on that?
Are you going to amend?
Because I'm serious about that.
Are you going to amend the motion to rename the nap room?
Well, we know that.
The Ken Fisher nap room?
You know what I'm saying? It, I found it, it covers everything, but there's all kinds of outs there where the management can change, even though it's not written in stone, it's not going to be exact. Management has the right to kind of interpret what the meaning is, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, with that being said, I'll be forced to adopt it as presented.
I'll second.
Now, Grant, if you want to clarify something, go right ahead.
The only thing I think that we should clarify is that there were a couple of union people in the back of the room today, and they've pointed out that there are tremendous differences between this employee handbook and the collective bargaining agreements. You know that, the issue in particular, that there was an email shared about the, there is a difference between one of the CBAs and the amount of personal time that's in the employee handbook. There are vast differences between that collective bargaining agreement and what's going to end up in the employee handbook and the subsequent employee manual. That's the point of Act 10 and 32.
If I didn't make it clear, the collective bargaining agreements were not the starting point. The current policies and procedures were not the starting point, but there's a more fair comparison to the current policies and procedures. We basically made the decision to start fresh, because we have the opportunity to. And this is probably the one time in our collective careers, our period of service here, we'll have the chance to do this, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
Are we employees? We're employees, right? No? Employers? No, we're elected officials. Elected officials, good. Dale?
Do we have to make the amendment for 17 BB now, or are you just going to take that out later?
I intend to bring forward the employee handbook and the administrative manual for adoption via resolution when the manual is done, so you can take that out now, take it out later, and not take it out at all?
I'd like to amend it to take 17 BB out now.
Okay.
I'll second.
Were you a nap room?
Well, that was understood to come out. That was a joke to test us as to whether or not we read it.
Well, technically, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a motion on the floor, and second to adopt it. Are there any more questions?
Do we have to?
Go ahead, Joel.
Not necessarily pertaining to this, but step two of this is, you said, the administrative manual.
Correct.
That's obviously being developed by you guys as well. That'll come back here, too, for approving and debriefing such as this one did.
Yeah, and in all likelihood, it will be at the department head level, and then probably a committee level to some involvement, unlike this, this came directly to you. The administrative manual, I think, is the intent of the Human Resources Director, who's not paying attention, the Human Resources Director, to take it to the various committees, the administrative manual, and work with the department heads, and work with the committee members, so that everyone's on the same page, as much as we can be, and then eventually back to this group.
Are there any other questions? If not, go to your voter panel and vote her up or vote her down.
What are we voting on?
What'd you say?
The nap room.
Are we voting on the nap?
Yes, the nap room.
Oh, we voted on it. Who confused him? He's taking a nap the way it is.
He wants a room to stay in there. Oh, my gosh.
Now, that's about taking a nap, somebody spilled my room.
This was late in the process.
That is passed on a 17 yes, three absent, and one abstained.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, if no further business be transacted.
There's no oral report, wait, just a second. Anybody got?
I've got a place to go.
Hey, hey, do you want to get out, or you got to listen? What, Susan?
I just have an announcement. This doesn't have the right date, the night for legislative committee, it's tomorrow at 4:30, not the week.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no oral committee reports or review of committee minutes. Next board meeting is Tuesday, May 28 at 9:00. Now you can make your motion.
I'll make the, I'll make a motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Joel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On behalf of the management team, thank you. It's a very important day today. Thank you.